Hello, I am Mayor Drew Combs and welcome to the October 21st special and regular city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers. Please note public comment speaker time may be limited if there are more than ten speakers on an item. We also ask that if you are in person, please submit your speaker cards for all agenda items to the city clerk at this time. I would like to introduce city council members and staff present in city council chambers are myself, Mayor Drew Combs, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, city council members Jeff Schmidt, Cecilia Taylor and Jennifer Wise. Staff present include Mayor Justin, excuse me, City Manager Justin Freud and Slev. City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Nira Doherty and City Clerk Judy Herring. Closed session. City Clerk Karen, please call for public comment for closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and again echoing a welcome to our October 21st city council meeting. So for members of the public who wish to provide comment on our closed session item C1, conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, if you are in person, you can return a speaker card. If you are virtual, engage that hand feature. Or calling in, press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our closed session item C1. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Alright, thank you, Clerk Karen. The city council will now adjourn to closed session and intends to reconvene at approximately 6:15.
Hello, I am Mayor Drew Combs and I am recalling the October 21st meeting to order. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers. Please note, public speaker comment time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. We also ask that if you're in person, please submit your speaker card, no worries, for all agenda items to the city clerk at this time. City Clerk Karen, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Mayor Combs, and again echoing a welcome to our October 21st city council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, if you're in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, when the mayor calls for public comment on the item you wish to speak, you can engage that hand feature and calling in, you can press star nine at that time. Includes my instructions. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you Clerk Karen. I would like to introduce City Attorney Doherty for a report out from closed session.
Thank you Mayor. The council directed in a five zero vote to join in an action, the County of San Mateo versus State of California, case number 25519270. Other particulars of the lawsuit shall once formally commenced be disclosed to any person upon inquiry.
Thank you City Attorney Doherty. We'll move on to agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff on any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members. Does the city council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you Mayor Combs. I am interested in pulling an item off of the consent calendar and hearing it after our BMR discussion because the two topics are, in my opinion, related.
I'm trying to bring up my, what item specifically? J five, J five, okay. So we would, just so that would be pulled from the consent calendar and then we would take it, not at the end of consent, but later in the meeting?
Yes, and that is, there's a possibility that some of the items that are connected to, I believe it's item K two, I two, the BMR policy, may be better suited for item J four, which is the MOU for the Nexus study.
Which is J five, right? Consider authorize city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding for the city's participation in the multi jurisdictional grand nexus of these, yes, that's exactly what you said. Okay. Is there any concerns from staff or from the council? And so, okay, all right, so we'll take it up as just then a regular agenda item.
Yeah, so, sorry, Mayor.
No, please go.
For the clerk's minutes, the mayor is reordering the agenda at the request of councilmember Taylor to move J five to after K two.
All right, with that, we'll move on to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Speaker time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general direction. City Clerk Karen, can you call for general public comment?
Yes, thank you Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide a comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are in person, you can return that speaker card. Calling in, please press star nine and participating virtual, go ahead and engage that hand feature Okay, looks like we have currently one speaker, so this is the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Right, and our first speaker will be Marnie Foodie.
Hello council, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Marnie Foodie, I've been a resident in Menlo Park for 28 years. I am the chair of the Menlo Fund, a nonprofit organization representing community interest associated with the revitalization of downtown. I attended the farmer's market on Sunday and visited the booth for the proposed plaza at the 600 block of Santa Cruz Avenue. After speaking with both, a member of the M team, the consultant hired to do the design, and Fran Dern, I had the following takeaways. By roughly doubling the width of the bike lane, you could create a driveline for cars and bicycles to pass through the block without significantly reducing the plaza area or encroaching on the restaurant outdoor access area. This approach would be a win-win for both the businesses who overwhelmingly support this initiative and motorists frustrated by the abrupt closure on Santa Cruz Avenue. It also provides a timely opportunity for the city to show support for the businesses amid extremely strained relations. The current proposal features makeshift short-term materials. Rather than elevating the plaza to the sidewalk level, it remains at street height. Suggested elements include painting the asphalt, movable furniture, temporary banners. These are all low-cost items that have a very short lifespan. They will need repair or replacement within a year. It's worth noting the city currently lacks a consistent track record for maintaining and upgrading the downtown infrastructure. Adding a plaza with a stage is a great idea. Imagine events here similar to Los Altos First Fridays where live music brings the community together to mingle and dance. By keeping the roadway accessible and investing in permanent, high-quality materials, we can create a real plaza that reflects our community's pride and stands the test of time. The Menlo Fund is eager to collaborate with the city and potentially help raise supplemental funds to make this plaza a source of community pride. Many cities have launched biobrick programs to support such projects. We are ready to partner with the city on projects of this nature. Let's make downtown a place people love.
Okay, seeing no further hands or cards.
We have three proclamations this evening. The first proclamation is toward Menlo. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for public comment on this item?
Thank you Mayor Combs. Any member of the public wishing to provide a public comment on our first proclamation H one for toward Menlo, if you are in person, submitting a speaker card. Virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, press star nine now. This is the final call for public comment on our proclamation H one. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you Clerk Karen. Toward Menlo, the major annual fundraiser for the Menlo Rotary Community Foundation is a family-friendly, community-oriented annual bicycle race that proceeds from, the proceeds of which funds needs-based scholarships for local high school seniors, many of whom are the first in their family to attend college. With this proclamation, we celebrate the spirit in service and fellowship that the Tour de Menlo and Menlo Park Rotary Club bring to Menlo Park. We'd like to invite the president of the Rotary Club, Ali Erterk, to accept the proclamation and to provide a few words.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, the council members, as well as the members of the community. My name is Ali Erterk and I am proud to be the president of Menlo Park Rotary Club. On behalf of our members, some of them are here actually today, I want to thank you for this proclamation, recognizing the Tour de Menlo and the positive impact it has had on our city for more than two decades now. Tour de Menlo is Menlo Park's one of the greatest traditions. It's a day that brings together riders, families, volunteers across the Bay Area Peninsula to celebrate community, fitness, and purpose. What makes it truly special is that every mile we ride makes a difference for someone in our community. Like Mayor Combs mentioned, each year the proceeds from the Tour de Menlo fund college students, scholarships, and community grants. We now award more than $150,000 annually to local students and many of whom are the first time in their families to go to college. Over the last forty years, Tour de Menlo and other events that Rotary was able to organize invested more than $3 million back into our community. And most importantly, none of this will be possible without our sponsors, our volunteers, as well as the continued partnership and support of City of Menlo Park. It's the police, it's the fire department, it's the public works team, they are the ones that who helps us, helps us with Tour de Menlo to make sure that every rider's experience is safe and enjoyable. The Tour embodies what we truly care in Rotary spirit, service above self, and reflects what's best about Menlo Park, which is a community that brings together everybody to make a lasting difference. So again, thank you, thank you Mayor Combs. Thank you to councilmembers for recognizing this work and to your continued partnership. Thank you.
The second proclamation, the second and third proclamations are H two, United Against Hate Week, and H three, National Bullying Prevention Month. The city clerk will call for public comment as soon as she gets to her desk.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our proclamations, H two, United Against Hate Week, and H three, National Bullying Prevention Month, if you are in person, you can complete a speaker card, return that to me. If you are virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. All right, so this is the final call for public comment on H two or H three. You can go right on up. Yes, so our first speaker, it looks like Monae Brown?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Monae Brown. I am the founder and chief educator of Not Our Kids, and I want to thank you for recognizing Prevention Month and for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. As we look ahead to next year's Prevention Month, I encourage us to expand our focus to include computers, both at home and in school, and even in libraries. The truth is, technology has become the new playground, and unfortunately, it's also where many children are being targeted, bullied, and groomed. I created the Student Online Safety Act, also known as SOSA, because I seen firsthand the devastating impact that online exploitation and bullying can have on our youth. This act was designed to ensure that students, educators, and parents are all equipped with the knowledge and tools they need to keep children safe in digital spaces. I have left copies of the SOSA Act for you to review. I'm asking for your support next year in moving this bill forward. Together, we can make a real difference in how schools address online bullying and digital safety. In addition to legislation, there are trainings and educational tools available that can teach both youth and adults about online bullying, grooming, and prevention strategies. You'll find more information about these resources in the back of the room. And finally, for all those of you who have younger children between the ages of six and 13, I've included material designed specifically for them, age-appropriate resources that make learning about online safety engaging and empowering. Thank you again for allowing me to be a part of this important proclamation and for your continued dedication to protecting our children online, one click at a time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen, and thank you for the public comment. United Against Hate Week observed this year from October 19th to the 25th is an annual call across the nation for communities to affirm their commitment to safety and belonging and to condemn hate speech and hate crimes that pose a dangerous threat to the safety and civility of our neighborhoods, towns, and cities. National Bullying Prevention Month, recognized every October since 2006, is a time to acknowledge the devastating effects of bullying on children and families and to raise awareness that helps prevent bullying of all types, including cyberbullying, prevent discrimination, reduce school violence, and increase kindness, empathy, and compassion for others. We would like to invite Recreation Coordinator Zachary Cantu to accept the proclamations.
On behalf of Menlo Children's Center, I want to thank you for this proclamation, recognizing October National Bully Prevention Month. It's truly an honor to stand here and accept it on behalf of the students, families, staff, who work every day to make Menlo Park a kinder, safer, and more inclusive community. Our children, our childcare program, we believe that every young person deserves to feel seen, safe, and supported. And that kindness isn't just a slogan, it's something we practice together. This month, our students took that message to heart. We handed out wristbands that said "Stop Bullying," and we asked every student to give a kindness card to someone who made their day better. We will be celebrating Unity Day tomorrow by wearing bright orange, reminding everyone that we stand together during bullying in all its forms. Our older students have started a buddy-up mentoring program, pairing younger kids with older kids by giving them weekly check-ins with friendships, respect, belongings. We are also creating a kindness wall where students could post positive notes and to their friends, our classmates. Our art group is painting a tree of inclusion, murals where each leaf represents a student promise to stand up for one another. And during the long afternoon Thursday, we will host a short role-playing workshop where kids will practice on how intervening safely when they see bullying, whether it's in person or online. Through these projects, our older, our younger people learn that kindness takes courage and that standing up for another is what builds our community. This proclamation is more than just words on paper, it's a commitment. It takes courage to stand up for one another. It takes commitment from our city, our schools, our families, to continue working together so that every child in Menlo Park feels valued and included. Thank you again, city council, for recognizing the importance of this cause and for giving our students this moment of encouragement. Your support means the world to them, and it reminds all of us that City of Menlo Park is a city that leads with compassion.
All right, now we'll move on to Advisory Body Vacancies and Appointments. The next item, consider applicants and make an appointment to fill one unexpired vacancy on the library commission. Here to introduce the item is Deputy City Clerk Sandoval.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Good evening, city council. For item I one, staff recommends that city council consider applicants and make an appointment to fill one unexpired vacancy on the library commission. Just some quick background, upon receiving a letter of resignation from one of our library commission members, the city clerk's office conducted a special recruitment from September 17th through October 10th, culminating in three applications received, which are included in the staff report as Attachment C. The appointment process is set forth in city council policy, which is also staff report Attachment A, is for staff to ask each city council member for their nominations, with the number of nominations being limited to the number of vacancies. In this case, that'll be one. And then the candidate that receives a majority of nominations will be appointed. If no candidate receives a majority, we will continue to take nominations until a majority is achieved, and we will take nominations verbally by roll call, using legal first name with the mayor going last. Or if it is the preference of the city council, we can collect nominations by any alternate method that the city council directs. The city council, if desired, can also choose to extend the application deadline and make appointments at a subsequent meeting. That concludes my introduction, and I'm happy to take questions or call for public comment.
Let's call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. If we have anyone present in the city council chambers who would like to make a public comment on item I one, please bring a speaker card to the clerk desk. If you are online and you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen, or if you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine to raise your hand. This will be our final call for public comment on item I one. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, please continue.
All right, thank you, Deputy Clerk Sandoval. So then I, do I turn it back over to you to run? If, first, if there is any council, I guess I should see if there's any council discussion comments. Okay, then I'm happy to turn it over to you to run the nomination process.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'm just going to pull up our tally. Okay, and by roll call vote, if we could start with city council member Taylor.
Thank you. I will nominate Leith Abdullah.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Leith Abdullah.
City Councilmember Schmidt.
And Dawson.
City Councilmember Wise.
Leith Abdullah.
Margaret Reese.
Okay. Just one moment. Okay, so we have a majority of nominations received for Leith Abdullah, appointing Leith Abdullah to the library commission. City clerk's office will follow up and onboard our new commissioner. Thank you so much.
All right, and thank you, Deputy Clerk Sandoval, and congratulations to Ms. Abdullah and to everyone who applied. It was an especially strong candidate pool, and so thank you for your interest, and I would encourage you to apply next time you learn of a vacancy. Okay, but that will move on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. And we already have on record council member Taylor's request to remove J five from the consent calendar, so we'll only be considering J one through J four. With that, city clerk Karen, can you call for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. And this might be a question for our city attorney. Should we be taking public comment on J five at this time or hold until we get to that item after K two?
We should hold, I think, until we get to that item.
Thank you. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on consent calendar items, J one, city council meeting minutes, J two, a resolution amending the salary schedule, J three, receiving and filing the 2026 minimum wage update, or J four, a resolution to the California Department of Education for funding for the Bellhaven Child Development Center. If you are in person, return a speaker card to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. And this is going to be the final call for public comment on consent calendar items J one through J four. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, thank you, city clerk Karen. So I'll bring it back to the dais for comments, motions.
So it looks like we have a motion on the floor by city council member Taylor and a second by city council member Wise to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of item J five. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Clerk Karen. We'll move to regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The regular business item is introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing Title 12 Buildings in Construction of the Menlo Park Municipal Code by adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Code, Title 24 California Code of Regulations, Parts 1, 2, 2.5, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, and 12, together with local amendments to Parts 2, 2.5, 5, 6, and 11. Felt like it was Sesame Street there for a minute there. Here to introduce the item is Assistant Community Development Director Ron LaFrance.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to introduce this item. Every three years, the California Building Standards Commission updates the codes, the building standards codes that are used statewide. Cities are allowed to adopt local amendments, but in order to adopt the local amendments, they have to adopt the code in and of itself, and then they have to amend the code. Local amendments have to be based on findings, based on climatic, topographic, or geologic findings, issues with the town that are unique to the city. As an example, Menlo Park, as our neighbors, are approximately two miles from the San Andreas Fault, so amendments to address things of structural nature tied to the geologic fault line would be an example of how the findings would be applied to the amendment. So in October, no, July, July 1st, AB 130 of this year, AB 130 was signed into law. AB 130 restricts new building standards applicable to residential units that were not in effect prior to October 1st, 2025. In February, council adopted some pre-wiring requirements of February of this year, excuse me. And then in August, council expanded those pre-wiring requirements, air conditioner or heat pump, and added FlexPath. All amendments were filed with the Building Standards Commission, and the California Energy Commission hearing is to be scheduled within the next 60 days to approve the energy efficiency amendments adopted in August. The proposed ordinance, which is Attachment A, includes carrying forward amendments from the prior 2022 code cycle and the recently adopted amendments from February and August. Staff recommends introducing and waiving the first reading of the ordinance, ordinance adopting the 2025 Building Standards Code as the California Building Code of Menlo Park, local amendments to the 2025 Building Code, Building Standards Code, and accept cost-effective study that demonstrate the proposed energy efficiency amendments are cost-effective. The second reading is, of the ordinance is tentatively scheduled for November 4th. The second reading is of the ordinance is tentatively scheduled for November fourth. Thanks.
Do we want to call for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our first regular business item, K one, related to building code standards update, if you are in person, return a speaker card to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. Currently seeing one speaker, so this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item K one. All right, inviting Dashia Leeds.
Hi, my name is Dashia Leeds. I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Blumer Preita Chapter. I know that you've discussed each of these individual ordinance amendments already. We were happy to support the pre-wiring AC to heat pump and flex path components in August. I just want to say thank you to this council for your climate leadership, and thank you for adopting an excellent building code this cycle. Thanks for your time.
That was our final hand. So Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Karen. Bringing it back to the dais. Are there any questions for Mr. LaFrance or comments? Vice Mayor.
So I may, well, let me ask you the question, and I may be totally off on this. But in the report, it says that an example of one of the codes that is not being, one of the amendments that's not being carried forward is the threshold of a seventy-five percent for repair and remodel before the proposed construction constitutes a newly constructed building. And that is because there needs to be energy efficiency. And what I'm wondering is, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Yes, the, we found out in August that the California Energy Commission, CEC, is now requiring for a cost-effective study, if you have one of these kind of seventy-five percent, fifty percent rules in your jurisdiction, they need to, it needs to be, and the rule affects energy efficiencies, then it needs to be shown as cost-effective.
My question is, what constitutes a newly constructed building with a remodel?
So a newly constructed building is defined as the code as a building that has never existed before and not never been occupied. That's the code language. A, what we would call, you know, where they've scraped it down to the foundation, which is usually done for tax purposes. So in that situation, all the codes for a new construction outside of the energy code would apply to that, to that structure. So all the structural components, all the life safety measures, everything along the lines, within the bounds of the energy code. There is a section of the energy code that speaks to new construction, and there's a section of the energy code that speaks to additions and alterations. And so the portion of the energy code that speaks to additions and alterations is what would then apply to that structure.
And so what is the threshold for additions and alterations, or is there one?
There's, there's, let me just, for the sake of ease of argument here,
Please.
or explanation, there, there is a definition for substantial improvement. It's interestingly not, it's defined in the code, but not used in the code. So there's nothing in there that I've ever seen that said, essentially, if you, here's the definition, and if you exceed it, you have to do A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
What I'm wondering is, do we have energy efficiency requirements that will be applied to remodels?
Yes, absolutely. We have flex path, AC to heat pump, the pre-wiring requirements. Those are all, they will capture alterations or alterations in additions.
Thank you. So we don't need the seventy-five percent?
My professional opinion is no.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Is in their motion?
So I've moved.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash, and a second by Mayor Combs, to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing Title twelve of the Menlo Park Municipal Code by adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Code, together with local amendments to Parts two, two point five, five, six, and eleven. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
I just want to thank staff for all the effort you've made on the building codes and the energy efficiencies. It really makes a difference. Thank you.
We'll move now to the final regular business item of the evening, considering and adopt a resolution to approve proposed revisions to the Below Market Rate Housing Program Guidelines. Here to introduce the item is Management Analyst to Adam Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Thank you, Mayor Combs. Good evening, City Council. My name's Adam Patterson, and I am a Management Analyst Two with the city's housing team. And I'm presenting tonight on proposed revisions to the BMR Housing Program Guidelines. The BMR Guidelines were first adopted in nineteen eighty-eight and have undergone several revisions since, most recently in December twenty twenty-three. Revising the guidelines is consistent with the city's housing element, and the City Council adopts revisions to the guidelines by way of resolution. The BMR Guidelines help implement the city's BMR Housing Program, and revisions help the city's program and practices remain up to date. The guidelines govern certain administrative practices, including development requirements, BMR unit delivery and standards, commercial linkage or in lieu fees required when providing residential units is not possible, and tenant selection procedures, such as the application of tenant preferences. They also help implement certain housing element programs, including H four A, H four B, and H four C. Staff is currently planning for three rounds of revisions to the guidelines, including those proposed here tonight. This first round primarily contains administrative and procedural revisions designed, including clarifications around BMR unit delivery expectations, which are designed to make the project review process smoother, and may help reduce staff time reviewing proposals. A second round of more comprehensive administrative revisions is planned for mid-two thousand twenty-six. And the third round, which staff anticipates will include more substantial program updates, is planned for after the conclusion of a multi-jurisdictional grand nexus study, expected to commence soon and conclude in late-two thousand twenty-six or early-two thousand twenty-seven. Item J five on tonight's agenda asks that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding for the city's participation in that study. The study will assess the impacts of development on the need for affordable housing in Menlo Park, and will produce data which will inform certain aspects of the BMR program, such as inclusionary unit percentage requirement, the percentage of area median income that BMR rents are set at, and the commercial linkage fee. The revisions proposed at this time, with the revised sections noted on the slide, include detailing the assumed household size used to calculate the maximum affordable rent, which is also reflected in Table B, stating that utilities are included as part of the maximum affordable rent calculation, and that certain parking requirements be met in accordance to Section five point one point four, which is a new section that is also part of these revisions. A revision to the tenant selection procedures prohibits property managers from occupying BMR units at the property for which they manage. Other revisions relate to the proportionality, design, and location of BMR units compared to market rate units within development. These revisions add language and examples for additional clarity on these requirements, and separate each requirement into subsections, including that new section, five point one point four, on parking proportionality. For example, the guidelines previously required that BMR units be distributed throughout a development, and language was added to clarify the expectation that the units be distributed evenly throughout, throughout the number of floors, throughout the number of buildings, to the extent possible. The revisions are designed to make the city's expectations clearer to project applicants. Tables A through D are also updated. Tables A, B, and D, which are income limits, BMR rents, and commercial linkage fees respectively, have been updated with the most recent data. And Table C, which is BMR unit occupancy standards, has been updated to increase the maximum unit occupancy to two persons per bedroom plus one, which is consistent with HCD standards, and HCD is the California Department of Housing and Community Development. On October first of this year, the Housing Commission reviewed the proposed revisions and recommended approval. Staff recommends that the City Council consider and adopt a resolution to approve the proposed revisions to the BMR guidelines. If approved, the revisions will be adopted by way of resolution and take effect immediately. With some notable exceptions, projects already on file and under review remain subject to the current guidelines unless they choose to opt in to the revised set. And it's also important to note that project applicants may seek exceptions from some of these provisions through state density bonus law waivers and concessions. As mentioned previously, staff is planning on, sorry, next, so, staff is planning for two additional rounds of revisions. The next round, expected in mid-two thousand twenty-six, may include a reformatting of the guidelines, definitions of key terms, revisions to the procedures for changes of title to BMR ownership units, particularly for trusts, and updated requirements for one hundred percent affordable projects. A third round, informed by the outcomes of the previously mentioned nexus study, are expected to include more comprehensive programmatic updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Let's call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item K two, consider and adopt a resolution for approving revisions to the Below Market Rate Housing Program Guidelines. If you are in person, please return the speaker card to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. Currently have three hands. So this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item K two. Okay, our first speaker will be Karen Grove, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna comment on Section eleven point one point three, the tenant selection and certification procedures. I served on the Housing Commission for four years, and at my first meeting, I was assigned to a subcommittee to work on the BMR guidelines, and they have become my life. So on this one, I was curious. I think that this is more of a policy issue than a cleanup, and it probably would benefit from additional discussion. Because what it purports to do is to prevent a perceived conflict of interest by making a property manager who lives on site ineligible for a BMR unit at that site. And my understanding of the BMR process is it's effectively a lottery. If you have a certain quality, like you live in Menlo Park, you work in Menlo Park, and various other things, then you get preferential status, which means you enter the first round of a lottery. And then after the lottery is done, there's an ordered list, and some administrator goes through the list looking for a match between the household and the units available, and assigns the units, which is very objective. So I don't, I guess I, I don't see that as a conflict, and I feel like it's actually kind of punitive to the property manager to exclude them from the opportunity to live on site. And I think there may even be advantages to having the property manager live on site. So it just, it just seems like that is not so cut and dry, and would benefit from further discussion. So I just, my thought is that it should be removed and considered after more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle, followed by Pam Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, honorable staff, and fellow residents. I'm Jenny Michelle, native and longtime resident in District Three, a disabled worker, commercial property manager by trade, and recovering homeless teacher. Personal comments, thank you staff for your work on this item. I'm also speaking on Section eleven point one point three regarding the tenant selection and cert procedures, and I want to voice my disagreement and ask council to refrain from adopting this section. It is a standard practice of many residential complexes to hire and subsidize the onsite manager of both standard housing and low-income housing. In my professional work with Adobe with low-income assets, it's very common for the onsite manager, who will be available twenty-four seven, to assist with a range of emergencies that arise mostly after hours. The response is best when they're onsite, who can meet directly with the first responders and physically engage with the residents and address their needs expeditiously. Keeping in mind that we are in a housing crisis, many of our trades are outsourced to folks who live three hours away and cannot respond adequately to issues. Personally, we live in a complex that is barely maintained by a well-known owner in Menlo Park. We've been dealing with a gas leak and are, from our water heater that is incredibly dangerous and spiked our bill by two hundred and fifty dollars in a matter of days. No resident, especially low-income, can afford to have daylight between alerting the manager to the issue and the response time. Lastly, I'd actually argue the conflict is in having a non-licensed manager conduct lease negotiations or other licensed duties on behalf of landlord. That is the common practice that needs to be addressed and expressly prohibited. The state of California requires that you are a licensed real estate agent to conduct this specific type of business. That's the low-hanging fruit staff isn't capturing here. So please either remove this section from your approval or amend it as I listed. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Pam Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members and Staff. Pam Jones from the Menlo Park, Bellhaven neighborhood. And I would like to know how property owners will be held responsible for following all of the guidelines to ensure the rights of the tenants are being protected. It's pretty simple to figure out that tenants have a tendency not to make complaints because having housing is more important, the most important thing. So will we be collecting data annually? Will we be analyzing the information that we get to see if it is actually consistent with what's happening? It seems to me that this is a really good opportunity to have a program that is, that is looking at how do we protect the rights of our tenants? And how do we keep people housed so that we know that people are not being pushed out for nefarious reasons? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Karen. Bringing it back to the dais for any questions or council discussion. I guess I will, as I said, they, since at least two of the public comments were in connection with a section about a property manager living on site not being, not being able to apply and receive BMR or a BMR unit at that site. If the staff could talk through some of the reasoning behind that prohibition?
Sure. So typically, we, I think, would expect that a property would allocate units to their property manager as not part of the BMR unit allocation. And some of the intent behind it was to remove any appearance of potential conflict as they are involved in the marketing of filling vacant units and in the process of filling vacant units. Yeah, and I think, and, yeah, and just removing any potential conflict, I think, as well if, for example, if a property manager were to be in one of those units, and if they were to no longer be employed there, would there be a conflict between the property and the, we'd want to avoid something like that as well.
Thank you, Council Member Taylor. Sorry. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. That was the question I actually was going to ask. And just to follow up on it, I know that there is a difference between onsite manager, onsite property manager, and then a property manager. And my guess is the onsite manager would be provided a unit and would not need a BMR unit.
Typically, yes, that is our expectation.
And what my concern is, is not necessarily a conflict with the property manager receiving a BMR unit. My concern would be the property management company who manages the BMR units being in charge of it and not the city. So with the BMR, does the property owners manage the BMR? Or is that something that the city has some insight on?
Councilmember Taylor, members of the council. The property manager does manage the BMR unit in terms of its physical appearance, those type of things. The city does have some oversight, but that's more for the annual recertification of the BMR tenant. But the actual day-to-day management is up to the property manager.
Okay. And there was another public comment just regarding tenant protections or tenant rights. And I'm not sure how much that does or doesn't happen with our existing units. But being that housing is extremely important and not always transparent information is provided to tenants, is that something that could be a part of the BMR program? And it would be required, not necessarily for the property management company to do, but maybe whoever administers or manages our BMR units?
Councilmember Taylor, members of the council. I will say the BMR guidelines are mostly for the production of affordable housing versus the management. But in regards to tenant harassment, if you will, though that is... That item will be forthcoming as the city addresses anti-displacement and reviewing some potential strategies to address displacement, including tenant harassment protections. So... Or anti-harassment protections. So I would say that would be as part of the anti-displacement plan, providing those protections.
One of the reasons why I wanted to connect the two agenda items is because two main concerns of mine is... One is the vacancy rate of our existing BMR units. The second is establishing some type of Menlo Park-specific BMR rent cap. And since the NEXIS study is a grand study, so it's about the county. And then there's information that's going to be provided about Menlo Park. But what's the best way to address those two concerns of mine through the BMR guidelines that you say is for production? Or is it through the scope of the NEXIS study?
Councilmember Taylor, to address the vacancy rates, I think what we will... It's best through the NEXIS study as we potentially tweak some of the city's inclusionary requirements, including how to calculate rent to potentially avoid high vacancy rates in the future. This is the time to explore those different rent scenarios that could be more appropriate, if you will, for the city versus what has been done in the past. So yes, I would recommend the NEXIS study. And just to clarify, establishing a rent cap, is that... If you could please explain further?
So what I'm hearing is, and I'm sure other councilmembers have heard this as well, when folks apply for the units, it's usually out of their financial. They can't afford the BMR units. And just doing the calculations for... On the chart... Chart in front of me. I believe for the very low, that's somewhere around $1,070 a month, that person at very low, which I believe is 30% AMI, would need to earn at least $5,000 a month. And usually, they don't. And so establishing a rent cap would allow someone who has an income of $3,000 a month to be able to afford a unit that's for the extremely low. So my concern is the vacancy rate is related to income. Folks do not make enough income to qualify for the BMR units.
Councilmember Taylor, that is an issue that we understand, understanding that San Mateo County has such a high median income, highest in the state. Therefore, that sets rents a little bit higher at 80% AMI, for example. But as part of the NEXIS study, we will be looking at different scenarios about how to calculate rent, maybe at a lower AMI percentage. Still low income, since low income is 50 to 80. But does it need to be at 80% AMI? Or is it more appropriate at a lower percentage? Those are the scenarios we shall be evaluating as part of the NEXIS study. We'll say with current vacancies, we have been working with the apartment owners, the property owners, to try to fill those units as quickly as possible. But moving forward in terms of a rent cap and to address these higher vacancy rates, we're trying... We will be exploring tweaking some of these requirements that are currently in the guidelines.
So both of my concerns would be addressed through the NEXIS study, those two concerns? I'm trying to keep a chart, which is for the NEXIS study and which is for the BMR.
With the current vacancy rates, those properties are already under a BMR agreement that has been executed. So we are required to go with those requirements. But yes, in the future with the NEXIS study, those... That's the opportunity to address your concerns.
Okay. Thank you. I have a few more things, but I'll pass it to Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. My question about the NEXIS study is... It says... The report says the draft will be fall 2026, and the final summary is anticipated winter 2027. Is there any way to do anything more quickly than that, even as an interim measure? Or are we really looking at these financial issues? And please?
Yes, that's something we... The city can talk with with the consultant. However, that's the general timeline as outlined in the MOU.
But there is an opportunity to talk to the consultant and perhaps bring something, at least as an interim measure, earlier. And I don't even know how complicated that would be to do something like that. But just my concern is having it at least a year away when we've got issues now. So I guess my request is whatever we could do to facilitate anything earlier.
We can certainly ask.
Thank you.
Any other... I did... I'll provide some feedback again. Thank you for the presentation. And thank you for the public comment, specifically from Ms. Michelle and Ms. Grove. You brought up an issue that I did not think about. But as I am now thinking about it, I do appreciate that, like, with a property manager on-site and a property owner, you have, you know, a relationship that is... Involves both a tenancy and a sort of employer relationship. And then with BMR units, you have another set of interactions or engagements between the property owner and the city based on the obligations related to having to have that as a BMR unit. I do appreciate that. I don't know if we want to co-mingle all of that. That's a lot going on. So you've got, like, employee relationship, tenancy. And then you've got, you know, obligations under the BMR agreement with the city. I think I do appreciate what staff is attempting to achieve in that and is not to interject the obligations related to providing BMRs into what is a already-existing tenancy and employment relationship. I think it's just rife for, you know, getting the city involved in possible disagreements that maybe it's easier just to stay away from and keep it clean and keep that prohibition in place. And so I do appreciate Mrs. Grove's comment that is something that we should think a little more about. I do think that that is the case. I don't know that I would want to change or remove the prohibition from the action tonight based on thinking about it more. Because I think my default would be that, like, yes, these are not things you want to co-mingle. But I would be okay with exploring, if there are some examples of like, why that wouldn't be so bad. So just wanted to provide my comment on that. But I do appreciate the public comment because, like I said, it brought my attention to a part of the action tonight, which I had not... Framed how I looked at something which I had not before this evening.
Mayor, can I jump in?
Yeah, you can.
Just to be clear, and I don't think this was actually stated, that provision is an existing provision. It's not a new provision. I assume the council knows that. I also wanted to mention one thing that staff did not mention that typically underlines these policies, which we see in many other cities' affordable housing guidelines, which is the owner of the property that essentially controls whether or not a BMR household is occupying the manager's unit because they can increase that unit's income above an affordable level. And because we don't evict people when their income exceeds the max AMI threshold to be eligible for a BMR unit, instead, we wait till another unit becomes available and then that unit becomes the next available BMR unit. The property owner then is able to essentially eliminate a BMR unit by increasing a salary of a manager.
So that... A more clear expression of the concern. That I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Is there a way to have more transparency around the BMR process from the time a key is given to a tenant until they, I guess, move? I have concerns just around it just being a... Well, I know that the property managers have to report to the city. I feel like there needs to be a little more transparency there. And it's because there really isn't a relationship between the tenants in those units and the city. The relationship is only with the tenant and the property owner. And so even though it's a city program, I feel like it's... And I know that there's a third party that manages it or makes sure that the property manages it. But I'm just wondering if there's a... Something additional that possibly can be done. And this is, again, the goal is to fill all the units and keep them full and keep folks housed in the BMR program. So I'm not sure if that would be helpful or not. I know that the city doesn't. It's the, I guess, Housing Inc. that does that. And so I'm just wondering if there's some way to provide a little bit more transparency. So if there are issues that arises, it's not when after the person is moved out. And I'm not sure how much turnover in the BMR program. And maybe that would be helpful, is knowing something around the turnover or returning over one unit every year. And if so, why?
Staff can look into that, yes.
So I wanted a clarification about what is new about the Section 11.1.3, the tenant selection and certification procedures? What was existing and what is new? Please.
So the new section is that clause prohibiting the property or the onsite property managers from being eligible for BMR units at that property. Otherwise, if they are eligible, they're eligible and for units that are developments in the city, but not for the one for which they manage.
And what is the standard procedure for that? Is this something that's typically done for BMR units in other cities' policies? In other words, do we have any knowledge that this works well?
For this particular addition, I'd have to look more into what other cities are doing. I'm not entirely sure, yeah.
But you've... That's what... That's the recommendation, which I'm sure has been thought through. And great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I have two additional. And I'm not sure if this would go in the BMR policy. I doubt that it would be a part of the NEXIS study. And that is having... We did have a tenant relocation, not ordinance, assistant. So thinking about having a specific relocation assistance program, that's a little more, I'd say, effective. That is about Menlo Park and not necessarily what's happening in the county. And the other is having a first right of return for folks who are displaced, whether it's due to a renovation or a disaster, is the tenant having the option of coming back as opposed to the landlord saying that they can't come back. If that's a part... Can be a part of the BMR guidelines. Not sure where it lives. Maybe that's anti-displacement policy.
Councilmember Taylor, we can discuss with the city attorneys where that would be best placed.
Okay. And I came up with the language for the other item, and that is to increase notification requirements. And that was from the previous comment that I made, a way to provide a little bit more transparency between the city and the BMR property management. Thank you.
Any other comments on this item? What is the action item? So if someone would like to make a motion?
I need some guidance because are we doing... We're not doing both items. We're doing J5 first and then K2.
They're separate as I understand it. So if there's something you want for...
So right now, I think we're looking to wrap up K2.
Okay.
And then we can go on to J5.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, I'll make the motion to approve K2. And if there's additional language? Or is it the staff have what needs to be of what we discussed? Or does it need to be a part of the motion?
I'll have the staff... I'll let you go.
Are you referring to the additional language of to increase notification requirements? Is in addition to what you had stated previous?
Yes.
Yes.
To encourage more trans- To encourage more trans, not encourage, but to have more transparency in the BMR program. More information. Yes. Okay.
Does the city manager want to chime in?
Let's see. So, so that would not necessarily be a change to the guidelines unless we're identifying. So that's more an advisement or direction in terms of some implementation outside of the guidelines. Right.
Correct. That's how I understand it.
Well, and, and to be clear, we can add specific notification requirements that are not in the guidelines, but we'd need to bring those back to the council with in specificity to identify what type of notifications are required when they're triggered, what the notification substance includes.
Yeah, I didn't want to speak, because was your proposal, Councilmember Taylor, like specific notification guidelines or just greater transparency as it lead to the notifications? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I, I think it needs to be included in the guidelines. There's support for that.
Right. So then what, so that is something if I'm going, would have to come back. But then what specifically is it? What's the exact verbiage we're saying?
The verbiage.
The notification.
Increase notification requirements?
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm, what I understand from that is staff will return, you know, I'll defer to staff on the timing of it, but, and if it comes with the next round, but we'll return with some suggestions on ways that the owner or developer can provide additional notification requirements to the city when certain displacement actions occur or when rents increase. There's other examples in other cities where there are voluminous notification requirements. And so we can look at those and, and staff can propose some that might, might work for, for Menlo Park.
So I think for the, through the mayor, for the benefit of the council staff and the communities, understanding whether that be a, I'll say like a fourth round of revisions, like whether or not like tonight's changes get adopted and then come back for, uh, we've already outlined two additional steps. So it's whether these changes would be part of that forthcoming second step or whether that would be a step 1.5. Because then we need to know whether to allocate the resources to be working on that prior to the other.
My, I was just chiming in with my preference would be that that would be baked in into revisions as part of the timeline already provided, only because like we didn't, Councilmember Taylor didn't provide like specifics as it relates to the notifications. And then we could say that like, that's what we want. And then council bring, and then the staff brings that back. But there are suggestions for like more notifications, which means they're going to give suggestions. It comes back and then we could talk about suggestions. And then, and then it could be another round before those actual suggestions are actually adopted. And so that, that is only my concern is that we could be like two other sessions away from actually approving it if we were delayed tonight. But that's my thinking. So if others disagree, or you want to sort of say, no, we're not going to approve anything tonight, come back with some ideas as it relates to notifications, additional sort of notification provisions or requirements. And then we could come back. I also want to be cognizant of the fact that it's, it's not even clear that there is a majority on the council for, for any of this. And so I do want to like not put the cart before the horse there either and, and make it clear that however we're operating, or if we're giving staff direction, if we're not acting in some way tonight, it is a clear preference of the majority of the council to, to not act tonight or to act in the way I suggested. The vice mayor is confused.
I understand.
Yeah, of course.
Mayor, so I am definitely interested in, in moving forward and staying along the timeline. And I am not a member of the staff that does the work behind the scenes. And so in order to stay on your timeline and include this, is there something the council could do to help with that process? Is that, I'm going to say the C word, a consultant?
I think, um, working on the, the notification, increased notification requirements, I think that's something that can be done within staff's time that's already dedicated to this, to this project. I don't think that a consultant would be necessary or.
Thank you.
Yeah. If we're like going back to your timeline or like one of those timelines, like round, so like right now you have mid 2026, additional, round two, additional administrative updates. Would it be possible then to add to that? And I'm, I'm just saying, is this what, actually, I'm not asking it. Like, is this what you're envisioning? Are you envisioning something like adding these notification, additional notifications to that, that update or something else? And then also the question of whether that's what Councilmember Taylor's envisioning and what a majority of councils envisioning. We'll get, we'll get to that.
Sure. Thank you. I, I think we were envisioning that would be part of that next round in mid 2026. Yes. Second round.
And, and is, is that, does the council seem aligned with that? Okay. Yeah, I can, I can be aligned with that. So, um, and so we do have a, a motion and a second. Do we need to, I'll go back to the city attorney and city manager. Do we need to make any changes in the motion on, on that direction to make sure that, that, that direction is memorialized in some specific way? Or is just the general sort of direction from, from council and the motion as it stands, is that fine?
I, I'll be the first one to chime in because I'm seeing a few people looking at each other that I, I think it, the council just worked well to clarify the expectation. So I think it would be good if we can memorialize it as part, I'm not sure if it's part of the motion or is like on, on the action, but it's part of the direction that would accompany the action.
Yeah, we can add that clear language in the minutes as actual city council direction. And so there would be no need to modify the motion.
Okay. And so then the question is, what will that direction say?
I would turn to staff to summarize.
To increase notification requirements, to, um, to add greater transparency for BMR tenants, is to increase the notification requirements, correct?
Yeah. I mean, I would say like the, the staff is going to come back with proposals that provide additional notification options. Like, right?
Agreed.
Okay. Is that, is that good? City Clerk Karen?
Yes, that's very clear. Thank you. Okay. So with that, we do have the motion on the floor by City Councilmember Taylor and a second by Mayor Combs to adopt a resolution to approve proposed revisions to the BMR housing program guidelines. Is there any further council, city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Karen. So now we're going to go back to item J five from the consent calendar. Consider and authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding for the city's participation in the multi-jurisdictional grand nexus and feasibility study for a total amount of $744,136. This is not a sequel project. And so this was a consent calendar. So I know that there wasn't an accompanying like staff voiceover presentation, but I don't know if there's something additional you might want to add. If not, that, that's totally fine. And we'll just bring it to the dais. Or first, we'll, we'll take public comment and then we'll bring it to the dais. But I just wanted to give you the opportunity if you did want to say something.
No, no further comment.
Okay, cool. Uh, City Clerk Karen, let's call for public comment on this item.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on consent calendar item J five, consider and authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding for the city's participation in the multi-jurisdictional grand nexus and feasibility study for a total amount of $744,136. If you are in chambers, you can return that speaker card. Calling in, please press star nine. If you are virtual, go ahead and engage that hand feature now. Currently have one speaker. So this will be the final call for public comment on item J five. Okay. Invite Karen Grove.
Hello again, Karen Grove. And I'm commenting on this, clearly you should vote to approve this grant money for the grand nexus study. But I'm, my comment is sort of about a companion suggestion, which actually I was really happy to hear Mr. Wong mention already, which is the question of a, a household that qualifies for a low income unit not being able to afford the rent can be addressed, as he said, by changing the way we allow the max, by specifying a max, a way of, by specifying a way to calculate the maximum allowable rent for a unit. Currently, I think we're silent on that. And so it has to be 30% of the income of the household, but developers obviously pick the highest household income that qualifies for the unit. And then people at the lowest income for that unit have trouble affording the rent. So if I remember many years ago, when I was on the commission, Redwood City specified that the rent, for, for example, 50 to 80% income folks qualify for low income units. In Redwood City, the rent is capped at 30% of 65% of AMI, which is the middle of the income band. And that just sort of minimizes that dynamic that is problematic as Councilwoman Taylor identified. I hope that was clear. Basically, I think we're doing it anyway. I just thought as we're approving this item, it would be a good chance to ask that the coalition that is asking for the NEXIS study include that in the, the items that are studied. So thank you. I'm sorry this took me so long to try to explain.
Okay. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Karen. So I'll bring it back to the dais and look to Councilmember Taylor since she pulled the item.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And just, Mr. Wong, just to, to clarify what I understood, what you said on the K two item and the public comment that was just provided, that those scenarios are included in the NEXIS study.
Councilmember Taylor, that is correct. The city has a discretion to test up to four additional scenarios of affordable housing requirements. So we have some scenarios to tweak to, to see what is more appropriate.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on this item? Well, this is an action item. So someone want to make a motion, a second?
I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Wise and a second by City Councilmember Taylor to authorize the city manager to execute the MOU for the city's participation in the multi-jurisdictional grand nexus and feasibility study for a total amount of $744,136. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Clerk Karen. City Council initiated item. In accordance with City Council Procedure Manual, the following agenda item is to be considered by the city council. City council members can ask staff questions regarding preliminary scope, analysis, resources, requirements, and overall prioritization of future city council agenda items based on the, on a citywide work plan. After discussion with a motion and a second, the city council may take one of the following action items. Preparation of a formal staff report with a determined level of staff resources and timing for city council consideration, or advisory body preparation of a formal staff report with a determined level of staff support, or consideration at city council's annual priority and goal setting process. The city council initiated item is request by city councilmember Schmidt for a future agenda topic. Here to introduce the item is city councilmember Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I will not repeat what you saw in the document here, but maybe to summarize quickly. For those of us who've been following some of the Air District progress on the, the new rules for NOx emissions for furnaces, water heaters, they basically have gone through a revision period, 18-month revision period. They've made some pretty, pretty common sense revisions to minimize some impacts to vulnerable communities and other things. But that, that's actually being challenged a little bit by interests who maybe are opposed to these, to these new rules. The, the fact is the, the rules have already passed the Air District. They're already in motion and these revisions are really to, to really benefit the communities that, that might not be able to fully implement them. So in talking to some of our climate teams and people who are watching this really closely, cities are starting to line up to just show resolutions of support. And Berkeley, actually, we got our hands on the copy of what Berkeley's done, and they've already moved in that direction. We actually have some smaller cities who will follow our lead if we are open to developing something like this. From what I understand, it's a fairly light lift for staff because we have things that we can essentially redo for our city. So that's the reason for putting it forward is just to show our support for rules that are already going to be in place and making sure that the Air District can continue to make progress. So happy to answer any other detail, but that's in short, why I put that forward.
Okay, thanks. Let's call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, any member of the public wishing to provide comment on item L one, request made by city councilmember Schmidt for a future agenda item. If you are in person, you can return that speaker card. If you are virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. Looks like we currently have three speakers. So this will be the final call for public comment on the city council initiated, initiated item L one. Okay. And our first speaker will be Dasha Leeds, followed by John McKenna.
Hello, my name is Dasha Leeds. I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Lumber Preyeta Chapter. Here in the Bay Area, we have some of the worst air quality in the nation. Gas equipment in buildings is a key source of this pollution, responsible for more smog-forming NOx pollution than even our passenger cars. This pollution disproportionately affects disadvantaged communities, 99% of whom in California live in an area with unhealthy levels of smog. Implementing the Bay Area Air District Appliance Rules 9-4 and 9-6 would prevent 15,000 asthma attacks every year, save up to $890 million annually in healthcare costs, and prevent 85 premature deaths per year. The implementation of these rules unfortunately is not a given, and the voices of climate leaders like Menlo Park are urgently needed to ensure that the Air District successfully implements these rules. Our chapter supports this request by Councilmember Schmidt for a future agenda topic, and we hope council will direct staff to create a report and draft a resolution for council approval that supports these appliance rules with common sense flexibility modifications to assist low income and vulnerable homeowners through this process. We look forward to the future discussion of this item by council. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Next speaker will be John McKenna, followed by Angela Evans.
Honorable City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is John McKenna, and I currently serve as Chair of the EQC. I am speaking tonight as an individual and as a father. First, I want to express tremendous gratitude to Councilmember Schmidt for his request to bring a resolution to council in support of the Bay Area Air District Zero NOx Space and Water Heating Appliance Rules. Second, I'm also here to ask the council direct staff to prepare a brief report and using the template provided, draft a resolution for city councils. to prepare a brief report and using the template provided, draft a resolution for city councils' review and approval. The Air District Appliance Rules, which passed unanimously in 2023, are necessary to reduce health-damaging air pollution from the region's buildings. These rules are estimated to prevent eighty-five premature deaths and avert fifteen thousand asthma attacks annually, and save nearly eight hundred and million eight hundred and ninety million dollars in health costs. The residential water heater rule is scheduled to go into effect in 2027. After an eighteen-month implementation working group process with input from a broad range of stakeholders, the Air District is looking to amend the residential water heating rule prior to the implementation date in order to minimize unintended harms to vulnerable communities, grant exceptions for infeasible installations, and provide additional workability for residents who need it. The space heating rule is commencing a similar process prior to its implementation date in 2029. These rules, which will save lives and improve public health, are under attack and with a campaign engineered by fear and disinformation. A resolution of support from Menlo Park and other local jurisdictions is needed to protect these critical rules as they undergo the process of being amended with common sense flexibility measures. Without this support, these rules are in jeopardy, as are the associated life-saving and health benefits of improved air quality. Additionally, these rules are a powerful complementary regulatory tool that is critical to Menlo Park as the city works to achieve the goals in its 2030 Climate Action Plan. Appropriately, the city declared a climate emergency in 2019. A resolution supporting the Air District Appliance Rules is a necessary action in the face of this emergency. This is an opportunity for the city of Menlo Park to assure its residents, especially the younger generation, that it will do what is necessary and right in order to create the future we all desire. Thank you for all you do to support our community. I respectfully ask that you proceed towards a supportive resolution. Thank you.
And our next speaker will be Angela Evans, followed by Joselyn Anaya Galvin.
This is Angela Evans, a director at Menlo Spark and a resident of Menlo Park. Thank you, council and staff. I urge you to please vote in favor of asking staff to put together an agenda item and corresponding staff report that drafts a resolution in support of the Bay Area Air District Zero NOx Appliance Rules. As consistent with exceptions to Zero NOx Water Heating Rule recommended by Menlo Spark's Climate Coalition in this context, please support a resolution that also calls for common sense exceptions based on income and for the minority share of cases where there could be initial technical or other feasibility delays with immediate compliance. Though it has certainly always been meaningful for cities to show support for these regional rules, it has become even more important, especially in the last few months, when we've seen a variety of factors shift in our political environment, some of which have resulted in the sharing of tremendous tremendous amounts of misinformation and fear tactics. And so we've seen the need for cities and other leaders to show general support for these rules in a way that has become even more valuable as we work to get these rules across the finish line as intended to protect public health. Thank you.
And our next speaker is Joselyn Anaya Galvin. Joselyn, did you want to provide a comment on L one?
Apologies, I thought I was unmuted, so I was speaking. I'm Joselyn Anaya Galvin, and I work with Menlo Spark. I wanted to ask the city council to please take the first step to formally support the Bay Area District Rules nine four and nine six with common sense flexibility modifications. The other speakers have touched on the key health benefits that should not be placed at risk by fossil fuel-backed campaigns. All neighborhoods deserve to have clean air to breathe both inside and outside their homes. Not only will these rules allow for more appliances that use energy way more efficiently, but folks wouldn't have to worry about carbon monoxide poisoning or gas leaks. Quick personal anecdote, my foreplex has a gas furnace, and a couple of months ago, I had to do a short evacuation due to a carbon monoxide alarm going off. Our fire department was able to determine that it was faulty, our alarm, after a thorough check, but the anxiety that we were breathing carbon monoxide didn't immediately leave. And speaking with other renters who have been displaced and hospitalized from carbon monoxide poisoning just shows that these zero NOx rules needed to protect our health and comfort. They also help protect residents' peace of mind. And so with that, I'd like to ask the council to do what they can to protect these rules. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, thank you. City Court Karen, bringing it back to the dais for council discussion. And so in this case, I'm just want to understand like sort of what we're doing because like the options are, it seems like of the three options, two are definitely not really options, but then also the preparation of a staff report. It just seems like it's one too many steps here with given the the ask. So but so I'll share that opinion that that I think that like if if there was support, the next next step wouldn't be preparation of a formal staff report to determine the staffing levels, to determine like how it's some some sort of statement of of support. But but that being said, you know, I'll provide my own thoughts, and that is, you know, generally, like, I'm not a fan of resolutions. And I know that there are some councils on the peninsula that do them like clockwork. I tend to prefer council taking action on things and spending its time on things that it actually can take action on versus things that are recommendations to other bodies. And for me, I think Menlo Park City Council has ebbed and flowed on this, but for for most of my time, we have generally stayed away from, you know, these types of 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 statements of support, these these resolutions. Again, if we're shifting back to a stance where we do them, then then that's totally fine. It's the if that's where the majority wants to go. But again, there is a lot of things out in the world that we could spend time expressing some formal support for in the world and our community. And and again, I would prefer to spend my time deliberating on things of which actually have a specific impact and that I have the the power as part of this body to effectuate in a in a real significant substantive, meaningful way. And so those are again, my my thoughts. And and for me, it has always been in, you know, in on council and my two times as mayor, you know, you get a lot of these types of requests, and I have appreciated that I've just tended to say Menlo Park doesn't do that. Because again, there are lots of things in the world that people would look for some resolutions of support once once that that door opens again. And so those are again, those those are my thoughts. Of course, it's it's like I say, there are some councils on the peninsula that does these things with regular like regular clockwork. And and it's it's just certainly where the majority is at. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I will say first off, I hundred percent agree with you. It's not something that I think will. We've got enough work in front of us. And while I think this this particular resolution is near and dear to my heart, I actually spoke gave public comment at the hearing for report was adopted. I'm think that the city, we just I do not want to open this this door. And I think it I agree that it has been very useful to have a bright line where we do not do these sorts of resolutions. And I would personally strongly recommend that any of us interested in this, I will certainly do this, can certainly write a letter of support individually. But I think that it is not something that we should start taking up with the council.
You yeah, you're. Yeah, I think I would just offer a counterpoint to to both those comments. I'm not really advocating for opening a door to every resolution under the sun. I think for me, the the reason that also because of the demands on staff time, the the three reasons that this really felt like a meaningful exception are, one is coming up through the EQC and doing this kind of work and seeing what we've done as a city. This is the one topic where many cities sort of look to us for leadership, and we don't have a lot of those opportunities in the the breadth of resolutions that the mayor and the vice mayor mentioned. So I feel like that's one reason that I felt comfortable putting this forward. Two is the amount of staff time because this already exists. And it's a fairly light staff lift, which I think we could potentially verify if we need to. It doesn't feel like we're opening a Pandora's Box of doing this every every cycle. And the third is, this is, this is an important topic that really has started to shift the momentum on air quality. And it was a pretty hard fought battle to get these things in place in the first place. And even when they're amended, they're being amended in the right way. So I do feel like this is more an exception and not a request to open this thing back up to every resolution under the sun, just to be clear. It really felt like a one example of where we could be, we could continue to be a leader and continue to influence other cities. And Portillo Valley, for example, is super excited because they said, once you do this, we will take this and we will push this in our city, for example, but they don't have a sustainability manager like we do to do the work. So I've even got real examples from other council members who outside this our city who've said, we will follow your lead if you can kind of make this happen. So this feels more like a an exception versus a, you know, let's have a steady drumbeat of doing these resolutions. So I just wanted to add that context.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wise.
I'm not really sure who to direct this question to, but what is the benefit of doing a resolution just versus our sustainability director, like making an announcement or like some publicly supporting this in some way?
Well, what our sustainability director support a policy of on her own? Maybe so, maybe. Yeah, no, that's fair.
Let's see. So I could, there might be a couple different angles or aspects to it. If it's making sure that the public knows about what's what's already in effect, or what's being finalized or something like that, it's not uncommon for us to kind of make sure that the public knows about it, which is then potentially different than advocating for or expressing support for a policy. So that's where we would probably refrain from expressing support for policy unless the council has clearly provided that direction to staff.
Vice Mayor.
But this is where I think individual council members can certainly voice support, and that hopefully does make a difference. And that's different to me, even with this, again, I am wholeheartedly for this rule, but I do not want to make an exception. I think it's just hard to say this exception goes and the next one doesn't.
Yeah, I would only say that like, yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Schmidt that you don't see it as opening the door. But once you've opened the door, the person behind you will say, well, why can't I go through it? Like, right, you have all the reasons why you say this exception is valid. I've had requests to resolutions on the conflict in Gaza. We've had resolutions on the the war in Ukraine. Again, things where people are dying, and there are councils who have spent good hours debating those things. All very valid, but essentially we're a resolution. And for me, it's easy to say that like, and I and I don't just like easy, I think it's appropriate from this seat to say that, like, you know, we don't do resolutions. So I would say, again, it is, it is just the will of the majority of the council at that time. But I don't think it's, it's, it's fair to say, well, this is a special exception, or this is different. It's, it's not. It's, it's just a a route to saying that, like, we now do resolutions. And that's full stuff.
I mean, maybe I I'm more polite disagreement than saying, I don't know that we have a policy to do or don't do resolutions. I think we've fallen out of the practice from what I can infer from what you're both saying. So I'm not like, maybe classifying this as an exception is probably not the right way to classify it. It's more, I think we can do a resolution, we can do one resolution a year if we choose, we can do fifty a year if we choose, to your point, right? I think so it's not really an exception. It's more our choice with the council member putting it forward. So that's why I put it forward, right? I don't see resolutions pop up on a regular basis, and we're making some exception to some no resolution policy. It's just this one felt super important. It felt like, hey, let's just do one, as opposed to let's keep doing this as a regular practice. I don't support that, to be clear. So I wouldn't even think of this as an exception, more so I look at this as this feels like a pretty urgent community need. I feel like the city needs to stand behind it because other cities will follow our lead. They won't necessarily follow an individual council member doing anything, and they're looking for staff report and some of that intel. So, yeah, I don't look at this as an exception, more of like, hey, it's a topic that came up. I raised it as a potential for us to do this more as a one-off thing. If anybody else wanted to put forward something on Ukraine or some other thing, of course, they could raise it as well. So I guess I don't really look at it as an exception, as much more, much more topical, I think. So.
I'll go to Councilmember Taylor. I probably get about one to two requests a week of resolutions. From again, some of them are these form requests, like clearly go out to every elected official in the world. But there is, there is a lot of, and some of them come from people in our community who are passionate about something. And so but 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 yeah, like, like I hear, there is no, like I said, there, I'm not saying there is a policy. It is wherever the majority is at at any any moment in time. But I do think that there has been value that for some period of time, we have had an unofficial policy that we generally don't, you know, don't do resolutions. But again, maybe we're out of that phase.
Well, always your choice to put it forward, though. That's kind of my point is, it was, even if you get one or two a week, you know, always your choice to put them forward. I just made the choice. I'm not asking us to change a policy or make an exception. It's just, I wanted to put this one forward because it felt super important to our kids and the future and the air quality. And anyway, I'm sorry, I didn't cut across.
Sorry.
Mayor, I actually just wanted to follow up with Councilmember Wise because she was in the middle of saying something. And I don't know if you completed it.
You're very sweet. Well, I do now have a follow up question, which is, because now I'm very split on this. So Councilmember Schmidt, do you feel that having the city do this resolution would make a much bigger difference than having council members sign on?
Yeah, the part of the reason I put this forward was I've been talking to council members in other cities who don't have our capacity and said, oh, my gosh, if you did this, then we could take what you've done and put this forward to our with some basic tweaking, we can put this forward to our city. And I think from what I learned in EQC, other cities often do look at what we do. So the reach codes are a perfect example. You know, my hope with the reach codes is we can go out and evangelize that kind of stuff because other cities do follow our leads, not as individual council members as much, but as a city. So that's why I put this forward as a, I don't want to call it a one-time event. That's probably not fair. But why I made the choice that this felt like it was worth putting forward because I know other cities are kind of waiting on what we do.
And just just for the other cities being Portillo Valley.
Portillo, yeah, Berkeley has, we found out, I Um, Port- Portillo, yeah, B- Berkeley has, we found out, uh, I think.
I know Berkeley's not waiting for Menlo Park to act.
No, no, Berkeley had something that we could, so just like w- we would be able to replicate what Berkeley did and that saved staff time, then Portillo Valley would look to us and sort of say, oh, w- we can reuse what we're doing. So.
Which is where, but one, one city, one, one city.
Where I've had personal conversations. I think other folks who made public comments have had other conversations that I'm not privy to, but I've, I've had one personal conversation.
Okay, I'm sorry, now we're talking over you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Um, where are we in this? Oh, just, there's no point in me providing feedback. I do support the mayor and vice mayor's position. And I can easily share with you some history around resolutions in Menlo Park that are Menlo Park specific, um, that in my opinion have not been completed, I'll say. And for me, I believe that our work needs to be focused on Menlo Park. And it sounds good to be a leader and to be first or second when it comes to supporting efforts. Um, for a resolution that's specific to the air district, it would have been nice for our air district representative to reach out to us and ask because we do have a representative. Yes. So for me, just thinking about process. Um, and then also, um, I was gonna ask the mayor this question, but I believe I already know the answer. Um, and that is at the city select committee, if this was a discussion, if it was on the agenda. And I know there's a meeting this Friday, so if it had come to us that way.
It, it, it had not, but then I can't speak to, I'm not gonna speak with any accuracy about like any city select committee discussions. So it certainly could have been, but, but obviously this isn't something that I've had visibility into um, of, of, of cities like, you know, doing resolutions. But that doesn't mean anything because I will admit to not being, y- you know, sort of very much tied into the, the, the city, uh, all of the other cities in, in the, uh, on the peninsula, or those, s- some of those networks, so.
Thank you.
Um, so uh, um, i- you, d- does not look like we have three votes of support, but you can certainly m- make a motion or, or you can, we can have a formal vote or, or we cannot have a formal vote. Um, I would say even, again, expressing that I, I don't know that it's, it's best for us to like open the door to resolutions. Um, we should look at some sort of tweak to our council-initiated um, items that like, if it is a resolution, then like the next step would be the resolution and instead of the preparation of a report on how much it would take to do the resolution. Then in these exceptions, which I hope we're not returning to personally, that I, I do think that there is an inefficiency to, to be had if, if there are some, some, y- you know, i- if, if there is a, a future where, where more, where a majority of the council wants, wants to do, uh, wants to do resolutions and so, um, but, but I'll let, I'll let you.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to make a motion just so we have it on record um, of how this played out because maybe that will be just a, a way to memorialize some of that conversation, so.
Yeah, I think that's a, a valid point.
Uh, very quick question, um, for the motion, what, what is, what?
Oh, so, yeah, that's a good, good, I think it, the, the motion would be, like a fourth option, would be preparation of the resolution um, to, to be brought to the next, the next council meeting or a, as soon as possible, a, a, a future council mem- meeting.
Thank you.
I think that's the motion that I'm not supporting, to be clear, but I think, I think that's what we would do here.
Give me just one moment. Okay, so with that, uh, so City Councilmember Schmidt, the motion would be the preparation of a resolution of support at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, and we do have a second by City Councilmember Wise. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion fails with Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, and City Councilmember Taylor dissenting. Thank you.
All right, thanks, and, and thank you, Councilmember Schmidt, for bringing that forward. And I do appreciate it because I do think it's important that we revisit these things, like, right? Where, where we're at, and here is a moment where we, I, I think for a resolution of which we were all like substantively supportive of, but we revisit like where we're at um, with regards to this again, um, uh, unofficial policy of, of not doing resolutions. And it's clear we're close, maybe in the future there will be a fair vote. Like I say, councils evolve and change. And again, this was a moment where we, we tested where we're at and, and, um, and, and yeah, there, there could be some evolution on this in the future. Um, we're gonna move on to informational items. Uh, informational items are transmitted to the city council and staff's effort to provide and update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question uh, on any of the informational items. City Corcoran, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on info items M1, city council agenda topics, or M2, the home upgrade services progress report. If you are in person, return a speaker card here to me. If you are virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our informational items, M1 and M2. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, thank you, Corcoran. We'll move on to uh, city manager's report. Here to introduce the item is City Manager Justin Murphy.
Uh, yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. So I did want to highlight two upcoming uh, events. The first is the State of the City uh, occurring this Thursday, uh, October 23rd from 5:30 to 7:30. It's opportunity for the city to highlight um, accomplishments and review key initiatives. Uh, the event uh, does include a RSVP online. You can access that through the city's website or if anybody has any challenges accessing that, feel free to call the uh, city manager's office at six five oh three three zero uh, six six one zero. And then the second event is this um, uh, series of events related to Halloweek. So on Saturday is the Halloween Hoopla Parade downtown, looking like the weather's gonna cooperate. Um, so that uh, event starts at 11:00 AM, runs through 2:00 PM, starts uh, with a parade. Meetup spot behind Cheeky Monkey and the parade will go down Santa Cruz Avenue and conclude at Fremont Park. Also this um, um, weekend on Sunday, um, there's um, the Pumpkin Splash um, at the uh, Bell Haven and Burgess Pool. So that's Sunday, October 28th from 11:00 to 3:00. Again, opportunity to, to register for that event. And then finally, the Trunk or Treat held at uh, Bell Haven Community Campus next Tuesday, October 28th from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. So looking forward to these uh, events for the community. Thank you.
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Actually, there's two more um, community events and that is the um, Public Plaza on the 600 block on Wednesday, October 19th, I believe it's from 2:00 to 4:00. Um, there will be a pop-up, actually, maybe I should let staff explain it, please.
Sure, so we will have two pop event, pop-up events this week on the 22nd and 23rd from 2:00 to 4:00. We will have staff conducting outreach and gathering feedback on the design elements of uh, the Public Plaza, actually at that site on the 600 block. Who's there? Yeah, you said two, was there one more?
The two events are on Wednesday and on Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00.
Oh, they're both about the Public Plaza, okay, okay. Right, was that it from you, City Manager Murphy? All right, well, thank you, and I'll plus one all those events and also the State of the City. I'll be there, so. Um, with that, we'll move on to the city council member reports. Are there any reports from city council members since the October 7th city council meeting? Vice Mayor Nash.
So the fir- um, the first one I want to report out on is the League of California Cities. So I went down to Long Beach and um, was there Thursday and Friday. And um, actually, the first report out, I guess, should be that um, there were no resolutions, so I had nothing to do other than just attend the conference. Um, and so the conference was um, there were some real highlights. The um, most compelling presentation I saw was the one on parking management. And it reminded me that um, parking is always a finite resource and it also illustrated how um, pricing and enforcement will shift behavior. And um, their final, I guess, final thing that I took away from that was um, that designing good parking management depends on data-driven decision-making. And so I think um, it was just, it was an excellent presentation. It's something that was um, somehow it felt great that, I don't know why, um, everyone else is in the same boat. Everyone's having parking issues, which I guess maybe I shouldn't. It was, it was comforting to see that we are not alone and that there are answers there. And there was an excellent consultant um, who spoke um, having gone through this for, I think she has been working for 20 years in the um, industry and with lots and lots of cities. And there are answers out there. Um, and then the other, actually, another highlight was actually um, talking to someone about the throne, the public bathroom, that um, actually looks like it's a really interesting idea. Um, that um, is currently, um, there's one in the Palo Alto Caltrain Station and one in the Redwood City Caltrain Station. And it's a free um, public bathroom, public restroom that um, one uses accesses either through your phone, um, through an app on your phone or for people who um, don't have the phones, um, can go to, for example, the library and pick up a card um, that will then give them free access to um, a very nice um, restroom facility. And it sounds like they've um, I of course was talking to the marketing person in one of the co, um, the co-creators of it, um, who is very compelling as far as they've really um, worked through a lot of the issues. And um, it's something that um, people of all walks of life um, are using um, and seems to be, seems to be working. Um, and then finally, um, a real highlight was, um, which I almost didn't go to, um, because it was a closing session, was Erin Brockovich, um, who spoke about stick-to-itiveness. And she was just a remarkable speaker and um, really just about um, sort of finding, um, listening to yourself and sticking to what um, what you need to do and following through and gathering a community, building a community and um, making a difference. And it was, it was really, um, it was a great way to end the, the conference. Um, beyond that, I also had an um, Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee um, meeting. And there we had a presentation on RICAPs, which is the Regionally, Regionally Integrated Climate Action Planning Support Program. And um, we recommended that the CCG Board of Directors approve an agreement um, to continue that program. And um, this was for $50,000. Um, so it seems um, the money goes a long way um, to do it. And Sustainability Manager Rachel Launder um, spoke at the meeting about how, how RICAPs has helped Menlo Park on our climate goals. And then beyond that, um, I will miss the re- state of the city on Thursday, apologies, um, because we have an annual retreat for Peninsula Clean Energy at the exact same time. And um, I wanted to report out that I am the um, the person appointed to the Stanford uh, Community Resource Group and it's supposed to meet quarterly and we have not yet met this year. Every meeting's been canceled. Thank you.
Um, and is, is that, that Stanford, is, is that connected to the GUP? Or is it just?
Yes, it's exactly, um, it's connected to the GUP. And the last meeting was actually last year where we've re- re- we reviewed the annual report for the GUP. So I'm guessing that there will be another meeting in November where we do the annual report, but it's.
At some point, they're gonna come back, definitely.
At some point, they're going to come back. And it's uh, because of the remote work, um, the big issue, which is transportation, has been dramatically decreased.
Um, thank you for those updates, Vice Mayor Nash. Um, seeing no other council member updates, I will adjourn the meeting.